...of September 12, 2022. We'll start off our usual manner with the Fudge Allegiance tonight led by Council President Brice.
You all stand please.
My pleasure. Allegiance to the pride of the United States of America, the Intolerant Republic of the United States, the nation under our individual 13 justices.
That brings us to our first announcement, which is our public health announcement. Councilor Brooks.
Well, hello. Good evening, everybody. Exciting news, and I'm sure everyone's heard that there is new vaccines available now. So check in your schedule. I think everyone is eligible to receive the vaccine. It's tailored specifically for the new variants, and people should have better protection, and it's a good time of the year with kids being back in school and all starting up. So when you're out there refreshing your fall wardrobe, think about getting your updated vaccine shot.
Next up, we have a new employee introduction, Richard Contreras. Welcome. We're done.
Where in the world is Don?
Glad you're here, Richard.
Is that like Lars Waldo? Where in the world?
Hasn't checked your position.
Exactly.
You said the proclamation says that we have a new employees. I'm like, all right, we have got a minute to go back. Did you do your dance yet? Not yet, I'm working up to it. Okay. Sorry to be, sorry I'm late. Mayor Vubinik and members of the city council, I'm Don Hudson, your assistant city manager, at least hopefully for the rest of this meeting. It's my pleasure to introduce, if you haven't already met him, Richard Contreras, who is our new contracts and procurement analyst in the legal department. Probably saying legal department, then why am I sitting here? Richard gets the honor of reporting to me until the new city attorney starts. He's counting the days. So Richard started with us on August 1st, and he came to us from the David Douglas School District where he worked for seven years?
Four years.
Four years. Numbers guy. Four years, he said 11 years prior to that is apparently.
I've been in Oregon seven years, maybe that's what you thought of.
Yeah. Okay, good, thank you. Oh, anyway, he brings a lot of knowledge and skills to this new position, which we created in this budget process, had to be able to help out in the legal department with contracts and procurement. He will be responsible for tracking our city contracts or helping create new ones, helping the departments with contract and procurement related questions, and also making sure that in our contracts, we have the clauses that are necessary to protect the city's interests. He'll also be assisting the departments with their bidding and requests for proposals and allow those questions to come up. So a lot of assistance to the departments. He's been out meeting with the department since he's been here. They are very ecstatic to have that assistance and to, to mean have a resource available, and Richard has proven to be a great resource in our building, in our departments, and across the city with contract and procurement ability. So I know you will join me in welcoming Richard to the Twelton team.
Thank you. It's wonderful to be here, and thank you, Don, for that welcome, not just them, but since I've been here, he's been just wonderful and very helpful in getting me set up, and I'm just so happy to be here, working for the city. And sincerely, every day I show up to work just grateful to be working with such a wonderful team and helping to serve a great city. So thank you, and thanks for the invitation to say hello.
Thanks for coming. Contracts and acquisitions are constant for a city. You can see the contract, and the procurement process can get mind numbing, but it's super important. Who you want to get caught short by a vendor, you want to protect the city, so I thank you for bringing your expertise, making sure the city's covered with the contract.
I'm looking forward to it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. C-O-N-T-R-E-A-S. Thank you, councilors.
Bring this to item number three, proclamation declared in the month of September 2022 as emergency preparedness month of this year in Twelton. Welcome.
Later in her, later in your program, Kathy will come and come tell you all about cert. So hi, Council Mayor Lindsay Marshall, Information and Maintenance Services. So September, we're in September, it is fall pumpkin spice latte season, and in 2004, incidentally, a year after the pumpkin spice latte was introduced to, to the world, the Federal Emergency Management Association decided to make September Preparedness Month. And preparedness really falls into all parts of our lives almost daily. We were, I overheard Councilor Brooks talking about the Climate Action Plan and Sustainability earlier, and, you know, thinking about what's going on in the world right now. We've had heat tones, it's been, was it 95 degrees on Saturday? They're popping up globally, causing droughts, wildfires, there's a typhoon headed to south, the southern islands of Japan and South Korea about to cause floods, Pakistan's under floods. And it's not all natural disasters, like Jackson, Mississippi's got the water, drinking water crisis right now. So emergency preparedness really falls into all different pieces of our lives, and so it's a really good time every September to remind ourselves of that and to think about little pieces of preparedness here and there, and it can be a big sweep, let's make our kit, let's do a whole thing. It could be little five-minute tasks here and there. Washington County has a great website called Take Five to Survive, and it's got five little, five-minute little tasks while you're scrolling on, scrolling on your phone, while you're waiting to pick up your kid, while you're at the dollar store, whatever it is. Truly, that's one of the examples listed, right? You go to the dollar store, grab extra roll of toilet paper, whatever it is. So every September, we take a minute to remind ourselves that preparedness is an important part of everyday life, and we thank you, council, for reminding the city that, and the community, that it's something that we shall be thinking about regularly. Thank you.
Declaring the month of September 2022 as Emergency Preparedness Month in the city of Twelton, whereas National Preparedness Month is a nationwide coordinated effort sponsored by the U.S. Department of Homeland Security each September to encourage Americans to prepare for emergencies in their homes, businesses, and schools, and whereas disasters often strike quickly with little or no warning, and residents might be forced to evacuate neighborhoods, schools, and work sites, or to be confined to homes, and whereas the world has grappled with the COVID-19 pandemic, which has impacted the nation and city for an extended period of time, requiring residents to prepare differently for other disasters that might, may affect their community, and whereas the challenges posed by climate change, such as more extreme storms, heat waves, drought, wildfires, and flooding, may significantly alter the hazards communities face, and whereas, emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every resident of the city of Twelton, Oregon, and all residents are urged to make preparedness a priority and work together to ensure that individuals, families, and communities are prepared for emergencies of any type, and whereas Preparedness Month creates a significant opportunity for every resident of the city of Twelton to reflect and act on shared responsibility, to be prepared, and whereas the city supports and encourages the citizen participation in the Twelton Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, so citizens can be prepared and trained for emergencies, and whereas individuals, neighborhoods, businesses, and communities can all take steps to increase their resilience and look out for one another when major emergencies or disasters strike. Now therefore, it is proclaimed by the city, by the Twelton City Council that September 2022 is Emergency Preparedness Month, and encourages all residents and businesses to develop their own emergency preparedness plan and work together toward creating a more prepared community, introduced and adopted this 12th day of September 2022.
Bring this to announcement number four, a proclamation declared in September 2022 as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Twelton, this be read in Spanish and English by Councilor R.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and I want to thank everyone for, you know, for coming and being present, and I want to thank the audience out there, too. It is my pride to read this, it is, I believe, the first time we do a Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation, so I'm really excited about it, and I'm really happy and very proud of my city, thank you very much. Whereas each year, the United States observes National Hispanic Heritage, Heritage Month by celebrating the culture, heritage, and countless contributions of those whose ancestors were indigenous to North America, as well as those who came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central America, and South America. And whereas, what began in 1968, a Hispanic Heritage Month week under President Johnson, was expanded by President Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15th and ending on October 15th. And whereas, this year, this year's theme, Unidos, inclusivity for a stronger nation, encourages us to ensure that all voices are represented and welcome to help build stronger communities in a stronger nation, and whereas, we recognize and honor the many ways the Hispanic, Hispanics have enriched the fabric of our society, while also be dedicating ourselves to address the lack of equal access to opportunity that many still face, and whereas a Hispanic, whereas Hispanics continue the rich, traditional, significant, and diverse contributions to the cultural, educational, economic, and political vitality of the city of Twelton. Now therefore, the is proclaimed by the city council of the city of Twelton, Oregon, that September 15th through October 15th, 2022, are Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Twelton, and encourages all residents to celebrate our unique and vibrant history and recommit ourselves, ourselves to a shared future of healthy, peaceful, safe, and sustainable communities for all, introduced and adopted this 12th day of September 2022 in the city of Twelton. Reading my native tongue, español. Proclamación en honor al mes de la herencia hispana, por la cual cada año los Estados Unidos observan mes nacional de la herencia hispana celebrando la cultura, el patrimonio, y las innumerables contribuciones que aquellos cuyos antepasados eran indígenas de Norteamérica, al cual que los que vinieron de España, México, el Caribe, Centro y Sudamérica. Y por lo cual, lo que comenzó en 1968 como la semana de herencia hispana bajo el presidente Johnson fue expandido por el presidente Reagan en 1988 para cubrir un periodo de 30 días comenzando el 15 de septiembre y culminando el 15 de octubre. Y por lo cual, el tema de este año, Unidos, inclusión para una nación más fuerte, nos empuja a asegurar que todas las voces sean representadas y bienvenidas para construir comunidades fuertes y una nación más fuerte. Y por lo cual, reconocemos y honramos las diferencias, maneras de, que en las diferentes maneras que los hispanos han enriquecido la tela de nuestra sociedad. Más, sin embargo, volver a editarnos, a abordar la falta de igualdad, de acceso a las oportunidades que muchos aún enfrentan. Por lo cual, los hispanos continúan su rica tradición de importantes y diversas contribuciones a la vitalidad cultural, educacional, económica, y política de la ciudad de Tuarte. Ahora, por lo tanto, que se ha proclamado por el consejo de la ciudad de Tuarte, en Oregon, que el 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre 2022 es el mes de la herencia hispana en la ciudad de Tuarte, y animamos a todos los residentes a celebrar nuestra historia única y vibrante, y nos comprometemos a un futuro juntos de salud, paz, y comunidades seguras y sostenibles para todos, presentado y adoptado este día 12 de septiembre 2022. 2022.
Thank you. All right. That brings this to public comment, excuse me, public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the city council, and it's not on tonight's agenda, please keep your comments about three minutes. If anyone here would like to address the councils, this would be the appropriate time. It's been quite a while since we had one of these. I have one sign up, but it's from a familiar person, Linda Moholt. Go on up.
Yay, welcome. Used to be. I think, what has it been, a couple of years since we've been in person? So I'm glad to be back here at the beginning. Linda Moholt, retired Chamber person, but now active volunteer in your community and doing a lot of fun things as a Grammy would do also. So I'm just super happy to be here tonight to talk to you about Twelton Rotary and the continuation of the Regatta Run. Most of you know the Chamber helped start this with a wonderful committee from Twelton High School and the community at large many years ago, and it continues stronger than ever. When the original committee was ready to pass it on, Twelton Rotary raised its hand, and we took over last year in the midst of COVID, really had a very, very nice event, totally community-supported, a wonderful business partnership, and the city were just so thankful with all of the staff and the support that we got from the city. Your team was incredible, helped us pull off a beautiful event, and now we're moving with you to Sunday, October 16th, stronger than ever. We have a really, really fun logo that I've passed over to Nicole, and, and would love to see that go up on, on your website, and Heidi and team have been helping us, you know, make sure we get the word out through all of your channels. But this program continues to fund scholarships, and we do it as a first-generation scholarship, which I also am first generation, and it means a lot when you don't have an example in your family of how to go to school, how to fill out an application, how to collect a reference letter, all of those things. And so in Rotary, we get to select the student that gets the scholarship, and then we mentor them for the entire time, and we give them $5,000 a year now. So it's a $20,000 scholarship per student, and this year, we're launching four students because we had three anonymous additional scholarship donors. So we'll have four going through the program, being mentored, and our students to date, we have, I think it's 11 out of 12. We've only had one that didn't complete, thanks to mentoring. So it's been a super exciting time, and we want you to also know that we do a lot of programs to support Twelton's youth in addition to the scholarship, and I would be remiss to say that this event was created in honor of Corporal Matthew Limkey from the very beginning, remembering a young Twelton man who gave his life and service to our country. So we're so happy to continue the tradition and just excited to be here. If I haven't gone over three minutes. Oh, yay! Should have had that when I was back in the biz, right? I know. Any questions that I might answer? Actually, I don't know, but I could find out for you. It is fun, isn't it? Yeah, Sunday the 16th, we moved with you, and I think that that's just going to bring out a lot of people in support of the event. So, you know, because they'll just come and they'll run with us, and then they'll go over to the pumpkin regatta on the lake and just have a ball, the quirkiest, funnest, most awesome event. Yeah. 9:00 AM, but you will be set up, you know, like, oh, dark 30. Luckily, the parks people will make sure that the lights are on, and we're super happy that the railroad decided to delay construction, so that was a really big relief.
And if people want to sign up for at least...
Just go onto the website, regattarun.com, and there is a QR code, too, so you can go to our website or on our posters, and yes, yard signs will be going around town very soon. And if I could just make one more comment, I am so proud of the city for taking this stand on climate action. Business, I always felt, was right hand in hand, responsible, and a positive partner in making our climate better, and I'm so glad it looks like the approach that's been adopted. I had a wonderful conversation with Councilor Brooks, and I'm extremely impressed. And just remember, when you're recruiting future businesses, anything that we can do to recruit businesses that are energy-conservative, that are proactively looking at how they build sustainably, I think that's going to be really important to long-term. So thank you for your work, all of you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak here or in Zoom?
I would. I didn't fill out that form, but is it okay back there? My name is Octavio Gonzalez. I'm a Twelton resident. I wanted to sit here to talk a little bit about, I'm so excited about the climate change initiative the city's taking. In the private sector, as a landscaper and HUA account manager, we emphasize conservation in all of our communities, from two-wire systems to less lawns, less chemicals, there's so much that the city can do to continue to improve on the efficiencies, not only on our buildings, but also in landscaping, especially since we go into parks, tremendous resources are being wasted constantly. I look forward to that plan, and at least hopefully maybe be part of that initiative to help maybe guide the city with some knowledge that maybe they didn't know about when it comes to the private sector and landscaping conservation. It's a big deal, and it's getting more expensive every year to mow a lawn, to water it, to fertilize it, and to throw it away. And here in our parks, there's many ways, many things that we can do to save those resources by recycling, reducing water consumption, using technology that's out there now, and credits. So thank you for the time.
Consider agenda, those items are considered routine, if I win motion, someone at council would like to remove or serve me maybe tonight. Item number one is removed because we're going to have edits done on the minutes, so I'll come back in our next meeting. So we only have one item of consent, that's item, now one, two here, considering a resolution number 5643-22, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract, complete supervisory control and data acquisition, known as SIDA system improvements. Anyone like this item removed and heard, certainly?
I move that we adopt the consent agendas, red. As amended.
I'm voting second to adopt the consent agenda as amended. A discussion on the motions?
I just wanted to say why I pulled it, there was just some comments about the cities that joined the lawsuit that weren't accurate and that weren't, it wasn't reflected in the minutes, so I just thought it was an important piece, which I don't usually do, so I just wanted to be clear about what I was doing. Thanks.
All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Ayes. That brings us to special reports, Twelton Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, 2021, 2022 Annual Report.
Is this my driving tool? Thank you, thank you, and I'm thrilled to be here for our annual report, and I am, I have notes, and I have a message. Thank you. Thank you, Twelton City Council, thank you, city staff, thank you to Clay Reynolds and to Lindsay Marshall. We have a wonderful working relationship with them, and we are thrilled. We have gone through a very difficult period, and we're still going through it. The pandemic, which is one of the emergencies we train for, has had an enormous impact on our community, and as community leaders, you know that. And I can tell you here at the ground level of trying to prepare for emergencies, it's been very hard. All the other CERT programs are still, as far as I know, on hiatus. They couldn't get people to show up. Beaverton's website I just looked at, and they aren't going to have classes until next spring. We have had classes, although they're small, and they've been hybrid, and they've been online, and we've had to use masks and gloves and all those things, but we've, we've been out there, and without the help of Clay Reynolds, opening up the maintenance building so that we had an area that was indoors but outdoors, we could have never done it, and so we are very grateful, and we say very nice things to Clay at every opportunity. Now, he, this is our status report, and I don't want to read it to you because you guys have had it, so I'm going to go quickly through the slides. We prepare for when first responders are overwhelmed. We are not first responders. We couldn't meet their fitness test. We have one person who might meet their fitness test. What we are are trained first aid and community communications people, and we're here to help people move from being a victim to being rescued and a survivor to being a helper. And we're trying to change our culture, and I'm going to talk about culture change here in a minute or two, and your help would be appreciated because changing culture, especially during a pandemic, is very difficult. But those are the kinds of words, those are the things that we train for, where fire is the most likely, and earthquakes and/or floods due to climate change are the worst. It's the consequences that we train for because we are suddenly camping, people are suddenly camping, they don't have services. And when any of those things happen, if you're not prepared for camping, let's say you haven't been a camper, your family is very vulnerable, and you are vulnerable. And it isn't just camping, it's dealing with injuries, structural damage. So we're part of Twelton Preparing, but just having a website, just telling people to do it, isn't enough. Changing what people do is very hard, but we've got a support system. We're all volunteer, we're now an Oregon corporation. When we started in 2016, we were a loosely formed organization, that was Robert Kellogg's words, and now we're actually, you know, got codes and charities and all that. And we have regular training, which you guys have, the city provides funds, so we can give excellent equipment to our trainees. This is the group checking in in the spring. This is them using that wonderful building that has airflow, they are doing rescues, medical practice, and then this is us learning how to use fire extinguishers and putting out fires. Now, I didn't want to go past this. Twelton Neighborhood Ready is part of our CERT program, and in some ways, it's the most important part, and it's a way that you could help us by having a neighborhood meeting. We have a great crew, we've developed customized material, this prep book is for Twelton, it has the emergency numbers, it has all of the resources, plus it has a step-by-step guide of what you can do every month for a year, and you will be one of the most prepared people on your block. Plus, it helps you meet your neighbors. We've had all kinds of things happen in these neighborhood meetings. We have found homes where people didn't know that one of their neighbors were bedridden. When they saw people coming and going, they knew those faces, well, those were the caregivers. So if there had been a disaster, there would have been a bedridden person in a home, and nobody would have known, no family, nothing. So we find those. We also find other things, latchkey kids, who are going to be by themselves if it happens, and so forth. So I will keep moving along. Oops. She's gone wild! We appreciate getting a Beva Twelton booth. We have three Spanish-speaking CERT people, one of them is going to go into training to be a trainer. She made all kinds of connections at this event. She came away with 80 names, it was really remarkable, plus a connection, some kind of social connection she's dialing in, but she's a young, this... But she's a young, this particular volunteer, her name is Cynthia Martinez. She works full-time. She works at night. She came home from work at 8:00 AM, took a nap, and then showed up here at noon. And with her work schedule, it's hard, but she's enthusiastic and we'll see where it goes. Our fall class has started. It's the smallest class we've had. There's only six people in them. But one's a doctor, one's a nurse, one's a former teacher, and the other two are business people. So it's a good class. We're going to keep every one of them. Those are the, that's the curriculum we go through. Radios and setting up a communication system, this is our big goal. We have two big goals for next year, this coming year. One is to set up a GMRS radio system. If you do not have the time to study for a HAM license, which is really easy to do. It's only 20 hours of the worst time of your life, going through prep, learning about ohms and amps and all. But you can do it. We have, we have free training. And after you get through it and you take the test, $35, you have a 10-year license. Well, the FCC has changed the rules. Now it's $35 for a GMRS license. And they're allowing the same powerful radios that we use for HAM. It just has limited channels. Lake Oswego has, is setting up a net. We're participating in that net. We want to set up a net in Tuolitan. You don't have to be a member of CERT. But you do have to understand that you won't have a cell phone in some of these bad situations. And you could be sitting at your home not knowing what's going on. Well, these little radios also have the emergency radio channels on them too, and they have battery replacements. You, you know, even if you don't have any power, you could have communication. We set up our system with these, thank you very much, through the CIOs have applied for grants and they have kits. We have five of them throughout the city. We want to educate people to be able to walk to one of our command centers. And we'll be able to get messages out. The HAM system goes all over the world. So we'll be able to get messages out. The GMRS system doesn't have that range, but you, you would be able to reach us and then we can use our HAM system. Unfortunately, we have very smart radio guys who are in charge of that part. And I just admire them and don't completely understand it. So if you get a GMRS radio, you can be part of our net. You don't have to join CERT, but you could call in and learn how to get connected to the net. We're also reaching out with businesses. We had six businesses, just hit them with a gun, that right over there. Fujimi, Lamb, JAE, and oh, VRS. Oh, I'm done. May I continue? Okay. They have, they were meeting as a group and Fujimi is actually connected into the net. The president of the local Fujimi is a HAM. And this is what I want to talk to you guys about, is finding. The next Zoom for a one-hour class is October 15th. We want to have a community fair, which we had canceled in 2020. We were two weeks away. We're going to the Lake Oswego Community Fair this Thursday, so we can steal all their ideas and all their vendors. And I'm sure they would be thrilled. We have a lot of work with the city to set it up, but we'd like to have it either in the spring or next, next fall. But what I really want to talk to you guys is about this culture gap. In his TED Talk, Stephen Eberlin, have anybody ever heard him? You can. He's only 10 minutes. Go to YouTube and you could put in, why doesn't people, why don't people prepare for earthquakes? And in his presentation, he breaks down why. He made a statement, which I might not be true, but I like it. Never have, never have so many known so much about such a huge disaster and done so little. And he is referring to the Cascadia Subduction Zone. We are standing right now on the North American Plate. It is every minute edging out in the Pacific Ocean towards another plate. And this action is what creates a subduction zone break. Our beautiful mountains were created by it. This is geological phenomenon. You could invite Scott Burns, Professor Scott Burns. He'll tell you all about it. And people know about this. Everybody knows about it. But what Stephen points out is there's a cultural gap of preparing. Why don't we prepare? And he breaks that down. And as leaders, I would encourage you to watch the video because this is really the battle your CERT volunteers are doing. We are, we have all kinds of information and all kinds of help. But we have to break down, and what he describes is it's the cultural change. And you do that at a neighborhood level. And that's really what Tuolitan Neighborhood Ready is, is we're trying to do it at the neighborhood level. And when you start talking about prepping, preppers come out. And that's how we formed our group, people who have been preparing for years. So what is he worried about? A 9.0 earthquake. It might not be that bad. Scott Burns would tell you. It could be a 7.5. Okay, if it's a 9.0, it will go from Vancouver, BC, all the way down to California and everything will be bad. The last one happened in January, 26, 1700. And the reason we know that is the Japanese had a huge tsunami hit their island and they had records. So what is the common sense gap? It's people who know what they need to do, but don't do it. So it takes conversation and that's what we're all about. So today's tips, whenever we meet with the public, and if you were at Rotary, this was the tips that were shared at Rotary. These were the Rotary tips. Tonight, or we're tomorrow. You could do it tomorrow. If you haven't already done it, sit down with your family and do a handwritten contact list. Or you could do it on the computer, but print it out and make sure everybody in the family has it. Be sure and include someone who's in Kansas or Nebraska, somewhere out of, out of the Pacific Northwest. Start storing water, even if you only store a gallon a month, additional. Start storing water. Because unfortunately, the city of Tuolitan does not have a water emergency plan yet. Even though we have these giant tanks, the city's working on it. But you need to plan on storing water. And then utilities, you may not need to turn your gas off, but you need to learn how to turn your gas off. And if you need to turn it off, turn it off because otherwise your house is going to burn down. So we have a fortune cookie. It says, luck happens when preparation means opportunity. I'm opportunity. Our CERT team's the opportunity. We're doing our very best to break this down and any help you can give us, we'd appreciate. So I'm sorry I ran long.
Thank you for your presentation and I took pictures of those slides that I'm interested in. I had, I had a question. We talk a lot about the Cascade Subduction, which I think is a really important conversation. I'm also just very aware, after writing that article about the health impacts around climate change, and then having my own crazy experience with heat exhaustion, heat stroke, whatever it was, that I'm still recovering from, that I never had had before, and that was confusing for myself and for people around me. The other thing about that is, you know, when we had that heat dome, I think it was last year, someone on our path died. And I'm still having problems today. I can't seem to get better from this. So I am curious about if you guys are doing specific things around heat.
Well, we have, we have training on treating heat exhaustion. More people die from heat than in other things. It's very dangerous.
Very dangerous.
Very dangerous. And there isn't a simple solution. I know Tuolitan had cooling centers. Seniors are extremely vulnerable. We, we do have training on it. We don't have answers for it, except to be prepared. And if you know you're vulnerable, don't get hot.
Well, and I had no idea, but I think that it's a really important conversation around awareness raising because I think I'm a certain age. I've got some thyroid stuff, which is sort of a broken heater in the start with. And I think there's a lot of people that might be walking around more vulnerable than they know, but don't know they're vulnerable, especially because we don't have 100-degree days all the time and things like that. So I don't know if it was, if it's my age or if it's the circumstance and the environment. But what I do know is you go on weird street and you can't think straight. And I couldn't remember things that were happening in the moment. It's a very, very odd thing. So I want people to know about it and raise awareness around it because I think we're going to have more situations with people doing that. I do not want to be the guinea pig for this, but that happened to me. And I want to be sure that people understand. And, and then I feel particularly bad too, because I feel I could have been better for my constituents the night that I had it and arguing in a better way because I think that there's some important things that I wanted to say that I couldn't really say very well. So that, that's my one big thing is round. And I also want to say the other thing that I learned from some of the impacts. And that was the last article I read, which is the, the one that's out now, the Tuolitan Life. But there's a whole list of things that can happen from climate change. And one of the other things is respiratory illnesses and problems with respiratory. There's going to be more pollen because of what happens to our plants because of the, these extreme temperatures. So being aware of our breathing and our wellbeing. I mean, I had a naturopath once that told me, asked me, what's the element that you can't do without for the longest? And I'm thinking water and he's like oxygen. So you only get about a few seconds when you can't breathe. So I think we've all talked about breathing in one way or another with the pandemic, with George Floyd, with so many different things around breath in these last few years. And so I just wanted to raise awareness around these things and I appreciate all the work that you've done. And also it just comes to mind so strongly, all the work that happened during the ice storm and how CERT really made all the difference for our community, digging out of that situation in such a record way. When I hear about other communities, especially from, you know, the Water Consortium and what they were dealing with and how long they were dealing with it, I feel so fortunate that we do have you helping lead the charge and keeping it operational through a time when a lot of CERT communities were not. So thank you very much, Kathy.
Well, and I have to say that we have 18 leaders. I just happen to be the one here tonight.
Yes.
So it really is a team effort.
Counselor Sacco, your handle?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for your leadership and all your, as you mentioned, all the other leaders out there and the wonderful group of volunteers that you brought together. And I just want to take the opportunity to say thank you very much.
Well, I appreciate that. I will pass that on.
Kathy, thank you very much. Very good information. I work for the Red Cross and I worked with Stephen Eberlin before, so I know. He's still out there. I have, he's out there presenting on disaster. Three years ago, I think it was, when former counselor Kellogg mentioned something about a water tank. And I just want to see if you can repeat that and put it on record if someone out there is reading, hearing us, they might be able to.
Well, I'm not sure what he was referring to.
Something about if you need water, there's a water tank, your water.
Hot water heater.
Your hot water heater.
Yes.
You can use as an emergency. And I just want, want you to help me to explain it because I am not going to do it eloquently like.
Okay. In, in an earthquake, sometimes water pipes underground break. And so water service to your home doesn't happen. So what we do is we show you the steps to take with your hot water heater and with your water shut off, so that water in your system doesn't drain out. It will actually suck all the water out of your house if the pipes are broken under the ground. So what he was probably referring to was shutting off the water to your house and then using the water in your hot water heater. Now, this assumes that you don't have a tankless water heater. There are some that just are like an instant hot. The other thing that you may want to do is fill your bathtub with water. Because you have water in the system and the break may take a while before it affects, before you shut the water off. You also have water in your toilet tank. Now, one of the reasons we recommend storing drinkable water is that we're concerned about retail water filters. We're going through quite an examination process where the source of the water is the Tuolitan River. If they go through those filters, it's not drinkable. You still have to put a chlorine product in. And then depending on how big the disaster is, using filtered water out of the river might include pollutants that aren't normally there because all kinds of bad things could go into that river. So Tuolitan does have ample water storage. And the city has worked on an emergency plan so that consumers can get to those large water storage tanks, which are drinkable. But they have to come up with a way of getting it out without killing us, trying to knock you over with the pressure. So there's some engineering questions to working through. We know, according to the Oregon Emergency Plan, that this, that eventually the military will show up in two to three weeks, dropping off big pallets of water, bottled water. But what we want in our culture, here in Tuolitan, we want us to be resilient and we want to store water and help. And then if someone is living in an apartment, they may only be able to keep one gallon, but at least they'll have a container. So we have now these collapsible water bottles that we're giving people so that if they have limited storage, at least they have a clean container to put drinkable water in from the city or from some other source. Water is key.
Yeah, I remember that. And you discussed with me because I thought it was the same, what you were saying about people who live in apartments that might not be able to have.
Correct.
One gallon per person for two weeks.
There's not, most people don't have that much storage. It's a, it's a nice thing to have. But if you could just have three gallons or three days' worth or, you know, any amount is better than none. And even an empty container is better than that.
You know, Wyze Community Member once told me that it's not a matter of if these disasters will happen, but when. And so I just wanted to thank you and all the people on CERT because I think CERT is our surprise for our community. And we do need to make this culture shift and I'm glad you brought that to our attention today. And on a somewhat lighter note, I, I want to call out CERT for Viva Tuolitan because not only did they have a booth, but they handled the parking and that event wouldn't have been the success.
It was a war zone. Complete sympathy for law enforcement. It was a war zone. We were, we were, people are, they have no clue. You drive into a parking lot. Yeah. It was, it was, it was interesting. And it's a little parking lot too, so, thank you.
Everything I was going to say has been said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you in so many different parts of our community and we are a better community because of you. And, and the people that you bring together and the cultures that you're, you're baking. So thank you.
Well, the greatest thank you can give me is get prepared. Get prepared and host a preparedness meeting in your neighborhood. Those would be great gifts. I would be thrilled. Get prepared and host a preparedness meeting in your neighborhood. Those would be great gifts. I would be thrilled. Yeah. Yeah, they're, they're really, they're really cool. And all of you could get it without taking the test. And and then encourage everyone you know to get it and be part of our net. You bet.
Thank you. Good evening, Rand Council. Steve Cooper, Assistant Community Development Director. It's good to be back here in person. Which are presenting something more exciting and interesting, but here we are. So just a little bit of background on why we're here this evening. The State Department of Land Conservation and Development generated these climate friendly and equitable communities rules, also known as C-FEC. They were adopted by the LCDC, the Land Conservation and Development Department on July fifteenth, I believe. And then they became effective on August seventeenth. The council. Tuolotin Council met at work session on August eleventh to discuss whether or not the city would join litigation opposing. The rollout of these rules. And then we came back with council on August twenty second. At which the council approved the motion directing staff to return with the resolution. Just kind of a little bit of background on C-FEC. So the rules change overall parking. And density around twenty forty regional centers in the metro area and then frequent transit corridors. And then there's also additional requirements for transportation system planning. Many jurisdictions have expressed concerns that the rules are overly prescriptive and that DLCD did not take jurisdictional feedback. Into it. You know, for example, there's not a, an alternate minimum standard that cities can prove compliance with. They just have to go with the rules. And so that's one of the concerns. Also, just note on our city's behalf. For example, we're working, I heard mention of the Climate Action Plan earlier tonight. We're meeting with the Climate Action Plan staff tomorrow. To look at our land use regulations, complaint and development code and how we can approve, improve those to align with that work. And so just because we're here discussing this, not to say that we're not moving forward with work to address climate issues. Which are certainly very important. So again, you have before you consideration of resolution fifty six forty four dash twenty two. And then there's a draft intergovernmental agreement that the city council would authorize Cheryl and the city manager to enter into. If this resolution is approved. And then last point that I'll make is the city's acting city attorney, Chris King. Over here on your screen is joining us via Zoom to answer any legal and procedural questions. If there's any questions that I can help answer as well, I'm happy to do so. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation.
It is good to see you in person.
Thank you.
Have questions? Thank you. I think that last meeting that we had, there was a lot of differing information that I found a little bit confusing. And I would like to know if we have the list of other cities that are on here.
So I do. Right now, who we have confirmed is we have Springfield, which was the original initiating party. We also have Happy Valley, Troutdale, Medford, and then you may have seen in the new state Hillsborough officially announced that they're joining. And so that's the list right now. There are other cities that have expressed interest in having a discussion similar to the one we're having tonight. Or are kind of out there waiting and seeing. And so that's, that's the official list as I have it right now.
That's five cities. There was a mention of eight cities, which. And it sounded like there was a cattle call of cities waiting to be in line for this. And when I went to the meeting, that's not what it sounded like to me at all. So I want to be really clear on that. There was mention of two cities by the city attorney that were anticipated to join. And I reached out to them and neither one of them ever, their leadership has not decided to join or stay away from this. That's Lake Oswego and West Lynn. So that's not true. So that's very confusing to say that. And I found it upsetting frankly. And I've also touched other cities around us. Tigard's not joining. Beaverton's not joining. I don't know if there's any city on that list that has a climate action plan. I doubt it.
I don't know yet. I mean, several of them are not area cities, so I'm not sure. And just again, apologize for the miscommunication previously.
Yeah, it was a little. And I just want to. You know, even when Kathy was talking about the severity of what we will deal with, with river flooding, with different things. What trajectory we were on and delays like this. I don't think are healthy for our community. And I also don't think the tone of a lawsuit. When there's ways that we can work through this and we don't have that many. From what I understand, when he, the gentleman was here last time from the state. A lot of the things we're affecting, some of the concerned cities don't affect us. So. I know that parking was one of the big challenges, but I do think there's exchanges that we can do and that the rules provide for that. And I also know that there was pieces around the transportation plan that's a concern. And I think that there's room to have discussions about that. I would hope that we would do that before just jumping into litigation. And then finally, I want to talk about like how much that would cost to redo our parking versus litigation. What I heard was it's not anticipated to cost that much, depending on how many other cities join. I counted five other cities, not eight. And if this council moves forward with this proposal, which I hope it does not, and I hope it really thinks about it. I hope that there's a cap that we consider to put on this as far as how much spending we would do towards a lawsuit like this. And I just was curious with the city attorney, I felt as though there was a lot of reasons that. You were telling us that we should join. It didn't sound like a evenly balanced conversation to me. So I was just, do you have like a agenda with this or are you part of this lawsuit? I'm just curious. Why it was so sort of one sided and.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to respond. And first, I do want to apologize for misreporting Lake Oswego and West Lynn last time. I had heard that from staff, different staff earlier in the day and reported it without checking and making sure that was true. And it turns out it wasn't true. So I apologize for that. I was given bad information that I forwarded on and I should have confirmed it before I did. So I apologize for that. Now, what I'm trying to do is for this city council is trying to explain, just trying to explain the concerns. That have led other cities to challenge the litigation, the concerns that I was hearing from a number of cities across the state. At least up and down the west side of the state. So I don't have a particular agenda. I just wanted to make sure the council understood the concerns that cities have with these rules. And why they could be a problem in Tuolotin. I agree that different cities have different concerns. There are some that are shared across the other, all of the cities. But some that are specific to individual cities as well. So I, I, I mean, I don't have a dog in this fight, to be honest with you. I just want to make sure that you're able to make an informed decision.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And I appreciate the explanation as well. So I appreciate sharing the, why other cities have concerns, but I'd also like to hear the concerns that we have about spending. Money on a lawsuit and jumping into things where we only are affected by a couple pieces of this and it's a five hundred page plan. And things like that. So those are the things that I hope that we think about as we move forward on this. And that the other thing I want to make really clear is from what I understand, we don't have staff direction to do this. This isn't recommended by staff. So I want to be really clear about all the things that are happening in this conversation. Thank you.
By the way, I do want to add that Cornelius is on record also as opposing. So that's a sixth city.
Yeah, they're just, they're, the cities don't seem to be cities that have climate action plans or have the same kind of makeup that our council does.
Sure, we will probably join a lot.
Yeah, they're pretty conservative too. Yeah, I don't think they have a climate action plan over there. One Democrat.
I think my, my major concern about this. More that even it was admitted by a gentleman that was here from the state last week or two weeks ago. That they really didn't, they didn't gather a lot of information from the people of color or other languages. Or any other ethnicity. So for me, that's a little bit concerning because it will affect a lot of people. And if they, you can't just make a decision without gathering information from, or mandate something. And according to what we're reading, it was not, this mandate is not a. It's against the constitution or it's unconstitutional. And so for me, something that's just done that way. It makes, makes it feel like we're just going to do it no matter what other people have to say. So that kind of, that really didn't, that don't work with me because I think it's important to know what these communities. Will be affected by these changes would want to say about it and to not have a lot of information or even. You know, you can just drive by and find out, oh, look what they did, but not talk to them. For me, that's, you better go ahead and talk to them. Find out really what's going on. That's really important for me. And I'm speaking for the Spanish speaking community. They not read English or understand what's going on unless it is spoken to them in their own language. So that's basically my concern.
Well, I think at the last meeting, the reason this came back tonight is. We didn't have unanimous and we did first and second reading by title only, but we needed to bring it back tonight to do the third. Yes. I'm sorry. That's what I meant by. This number there. So if there's no more questions on the motion, I'll make the third and final motion then. To consider resolution number fifty six forty four dash twenty two. Authorizing the city to join the Coalition of Cities challenging the state's climate friendly and equitable community rules. Need a second on the motion.
Second it.
I have a motion second to approve resolution number five six four four. Dash twenty two authorizing the city of Tuolotin to join Coalition of Cities challenging the state's climate friendly and equitable communities rules. With this, we are by council rules, this is a roll call. But go ahead and start with council Hilary.
Aye.
I would like to propose an amendment.
Is that an amendment to the motion?
Yeah, propose, propose amendment to the motion. I'd like to have a cap on how much we would invest in a lawsuit like this.
Do you have.
How much it would cost for us to do our transportation plan adjustments. Do you have any basic ideas of how much it's going to cost the city?
I'm unclear of the question.
Or the, I know that one of the big concerns was our traffic, like we're having to redo the traffic plan.
Of the transportation system.
Our transportation system plan is going to cost or how much this, the. The lawsuit, yeah. Well, to me, it seems like if we spend more money on the legal action than we would spend on the. The fix, it would be, I would have a hard time justifying that to taxpayers. So I would like to see a limit on how much we would spend on a lawsuit like this.
I still feel confused, I'm sorry, about what your question is.
Yeah, there needs to be a specific motion. If you would like to limit it to a specific number or percentage or some metric. By which the expenditures could be limited, then we could have a, yeah, then we could discuss that motion.
I'm just like curious about how much the transportation system plan adjustments that we would be making.
I don't, I don't know that we can readily quantify the difference between how much it would cost to update a transportation system plan with or without the amendments. I think one of the biggest concerns is that it's not necessarily dollars directly to the city, but that it impacts potential projects and it impacts people. Right, citizens directly as opposed to by dollar amount. And so I think that's the concern giving rise to the litigation is that. By reducing parking in one place over here, you're bearing the cost of the parking on someone else over here or establishments. You can't put a dollar figure on it.
Well, I want to be very clear that I, you know, I did ride around and I do have concerns about those parking things. And I think that there's a way that we can do exchanges with Metro. So to me, that's, to me, it was the transportation plan. That was the more of the crux of the thing because I think there's a fix right in the, in the plan that's written out through Metro. That we can do that and we have a climate action plan. So to me, that's almost done. But the transportation plan seems to be the thing that's more of a linchpin. So I wouldn't want to see us spending like a crazy amount of money on this lawsuit. So I would put, want to put a cap on it of, what do you think's fair? Like.
Part of the resolution is that an IGA would be reviewed, reviewed and approved by the city manager. So the city manager would be responsible for, you know, working with the other cities and the IGA. The IGA, the proportion of payment is based on city income separate from. Any federal money and they got from ARPA. But based on what I've been told and based on the map, we would be a very minor payer in this.
What does that mean?
Cities.
Like, what do you think minor is?
Ten fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay, so a cap of ten thousand dollars. I make a motion to amend the motion for a cap of ten thousand dollars.
So there are second on the motion to amend?
Then do we go back to the previous motion and go straight?
Correct, correct. For lack of a second, you go back to the prior motion.
Back to council Hilary, you already voted. Council Pratt?
No.
Council Reyes? Council Sacco?
No.
Council Brooks?
Yes.
And I vote aye also for three in support of joining the lawsuit. So that brings us to items.
Yes, thank you. I just want to take a moment to invite anybody who's out there listening to. To follow the Yes for Tuolotin Parks Facebook page and Instagram page. Whether you want to just learn more information or support the effort. We are posting information, informational posts where people can learn more. And if you are in support of the Tuolotin Parks Bond, please like, share, follow. All the things. It's much appreciated to share awareness and educate the community about the Parks Bond.
This week, the at the teaching task force this afternoon discussed the park fund measure. And mentally voted to support it.
Wonderful.
So they will be in touch with you to get more information to help you spread the word.
Sounds great.
Any other?
I just want to thank the city of Tuolotin and our Tuolotin residents that this, this month. Well, starting September fifteenth through October fifteenth, we're celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. And I just want to say thank you to all of you that have. You know, in a way, included us, like Viva Tuolotin. I mean, I've seen so much growth just in the last eight years that I lived here in. Tuolotin about the Hispanic community coming on board and like the music, you accept us and you take us in and you include us in a lot of things. So I'm just really proud of that. And I don't think there are a lot of cities that take that. And, and take this group of people with a bunch of, you know, we're big family. We come from big families, different language. and take this group of people with a bunch of, you know, we're a big family. We come from big families, different language. And you just said the thing, you're like, include us in everything. And when we plan things, you you still, you think of us. And I really, really appreciate that. I really, I'm really proud to be living in this city and just thank you very much for that.
Oh, I had two that I had forgotten since I'm doing these two separate calendars now. First of all, I just want to say happy Hispanic Heritage Month and and you're welcome to do a proclamation that I'm reading in Spanish anytime, by the way. I think that would be a great practice. I went to the cap, the Climate Action Plan Steering Committee meeting on the twenty-ninth, where we did review the information that was presented today and discussed the community outreach. And I also want to say that I had sent over some thank you gifts to the library staff for staying late for all the cooling center work that they do. And especially touched by that, especially after having that horrible experience myself. And Jerry Ann did a wonderful tour of library with me. And I have to say that I learned so much that people might want to check out the maker space. There's ways, you know, they're doing soap making with all these different essential oils over there. You can make buttons. There's robots the kids do. It's so interactive. As well as the library of things, I took out the there's a telescope. I took out the telescope. We got to see the full moon while it's still clear skies, well, sort of clear with all the smoke, but clear nonetheless. And just the art and the enthusiasm from all the volunteers and the two different groups, the foundation and the friends. And the friends do all the book donations and things like that. So I'm really wanting to encourage my husband to do it because he has a habit of books. So we can be donating a lot of books to the library. Anyway, I would suggest that to anyone to go over there and take a look around the library with Jerry Ann. She certainly was really informative and helpful. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All the favor during the council meeting for tonight, say aye. Right, I'll flip your hats around. I'll go ahead and call to order the Twalton Development Commission's meeting of September twelfth. At this moment, we'll take public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the development commission regarding an item that's on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments about three minutes. If there's anyone here would like to address missions, this will be the fact. And then we want the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are those things are considered routine. They were adopted by one motion, unless on the permission would like an item removed or left or heard certainly later tonight. Here again, we only have one item, consideration for approval of Twalton Development Commission meeting minutes of June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two.
I'd like to move that we adopt the consent agendas, red.
I'll second that.
Motion second to approve consent agenda as read. Any discussion? All for favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll be on General Business. Item number one, consideration of Resolution number six-three-three dash twenty-two, commencing a formal review process for the core opportunity reinvestment area plan. Welcome, Jonathan.
They have a different look every time we see you.
Had my own Brittany moment. No, she's right here. We need a PowerPoint, Andy.
He's having his Brittany moment now.
It's fine. I'll be quick. And so will Elaine tonight. So we are here to present Resolution six thirty-three dash twenty-two, asking you to consider the formal review process for the core opportunity and reinvestment area plan. There are two noted changes to the staff report and the plan document based on recommendations from last work session. One is the plan vision. We've included both the word environmental and sustainable as read. The core opportunity and reinvestment area is a guiding document in our community's sustainable effort to strengthen the social, cultural, environmental and economic vitality of Central Twalton by funding projects that improve property values, eliminate existing and future blight, and create an active civic core. In the second change based on discussions in addition, it is not reflected in your staff report, but it is reflected in the plan document as well as the report accompanying the plan. We've changed where the proposed Nyberg Creek River Trail goes. It's including the easements as requested by parks. So it gives them just a little bit more flexibility. The potential project construction area in that area. So what we had originally was just the right of way. We've now included the easements just in case in the future, if there's some realigning and adjustment according to planning that parks will do in the future. So those are the only two changes to the plan document. We request that you consider Resolution six thirty-three dash twenty-two. Oh, real quick, because it's not on the PowerPoint. The next steps is what this will end up doing for those who have not done this before, which I think everyone has, just in case. It will launch the public review or the formal review process consultant confer starting tomorrow. So tomorrow, we will have an online open house readily available. I think there'll be some adjustments through Friday. That'll be open for sixty-three days. We will send a notice and a taxing jurisdiction letter to the twenty-three taxing jurisdictions that will be affected by this, but by law, it's only through the fourth. But we're sending it to everybody based on what we did for Basalt Creek. This will be forwarded to the planning commission to make sure it reviews and conforms to the Twalton Development Code and the comprehensive plan. We do have a scheduled presentation to TVFNR. We are working with Washington County and Clackamas County for the presentations as required for best practice. And then the next time that this body will meet as the city council will be November twelfth for the public hearing. All the way up until the final adoption, this plan will be a living document that will be reflected by public input as well as additional input from our taxing jurisdictions. So what that will look like is if any changes or requested changes or amendments that are proposed either by the public or requested changes by the taxing districts, it will be considered on November twelfth by this body. And then you will come back and review and adopt on November twenty-eighth for final adoption. So what you're reading tonight is the foundational crux of the project, but it could change again in the future, except for the maximum indebtedness. That's what we were recommending at the one thirty-nine, one forty, and then in today's dollars, eighty-three million. And also the plan boundary, that's, those two probably should stay the same. That is it.
Oh, presentations to county commissions.
We're still working with Washington County and Clackamas County on finding a date and time for that.
So thank you for working on it. And Maxman, that is a good question.
Yeah.
She raised her hand.
I have a comment. The actual city council hearing is November fourteenth, which is a Monday.
Yes.
The twelfth is a Saturday.
Is it twelve on the PowerPoint?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Well, we can meet the twelfth.
I'll be on the Monday.
Yeah.
I'm not getting a haircut from you either.
I have a joke. Obviously, I got that date wrong.
Football game on that Saturday. I will be here on the Monday.
Well, I'll make a motion to, what is it, first reading or do we just approve?
Make a motion to approve Resolution.
Six thirty-three dash twenty-two.
I'll second it.
And the motion is second to approve Resolution number
six thirty-three.
Six thirty-three dash twenty-two, any discussion on the motion? All for favor, say aye.
Aye. Well done, by the way. Second.
Close this session, say aye. Thank you.